Did you present the letters of interest from the?
No, I have them in office though.
Okay, did we split this list? Um, did we split this list as to anyone that's gonna, that needs to make any phone calls?
We usually do it by district.
You wouldn't do it by district?
Okay.
It's how we normally do it.
Okay.
We can-
So Hunter and Sylvan.
Yeah, I was gonna say we can show you which ones they are.
Thank you. Whoops, sorry. That says thirteen eighty, I, I'll go find my incumbent.
Yeah, or give him a call or something. Is it no one to write?
Yes, I will.
So, out of the districts, how do you know, for example, does Preservation Board have separate districts?
No. No, we just, we just took wherever they lived.
Yeah.
So someone needs to call her and ask if, so that's me? To ask if she wants to maintain her seat?
Yeah, yeah.
Three seats open, two have maintained, or indicated interest in, okay.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else you can think, well, this one would be me too.
The ones that were highlighted.
This one would be me.
Doug Sulfur. You know, they do have somebody for that one if she doesn't, you know, she didn't indicate she wanted it, so.
But I'm saying are, we are making one phone call to the incumbent-
Yeah.
To say-
Only if they didn't respond.
Yeah, if they didn't.
Right, and then they're highlighted if they don't respond, so, okay, so I just have these three, well, yeah, four, but two's still, okay.
That's normally what we do, just to check in with them and-
And when do we want to?
We need to do it-
For next week?
Monday.
Yeah, we could do it Monday.
Okay.
And I have one vacancy on the bus board, I don't, I haven't got anybody yet.
So does that mean, or I, have either of those indicated?
Paul Kucherov, have you talked to Paul?
I have, I can talk to him.
Paul, yeah, you better, you better because he-
Neither of them have said yes or no.
Yes, I've, I've been-
Oh, she said no.
She's not going to do it.
Okay.
And I have an-
And does that have a district assignment, or is that just open county-wise?
We try-
We try to, we try to get every community, yeah. So he's basically Lincoln and she's Barnard.
Do you have a list of board members?
Yeah.
You have the board book, okay. We try to keep-
But I'm saying, but we don't have assigned districts necessarily.
No, no, they're not assigned districts, we just try to keep them-
The only ones are the fire boards.
Fire boards and the-
Repeater board.
Web thing.
Okay, my original note says that he said the lot is valued at thirteen hundred, and that's his phone number.
So he was close.
Yeah, I was thinking he said sixteen fifty, but I-
I think we should do that, that's my personal opinion, but-
We're near here, but.
Do we just make an offer?
Do you wanna make an offer?
Yeah.
Do you guys wanna make a motion to make an offer, or do you wanna tell me the dollar amount, and then I can-
I think we need a motion to make an offer.
You know, that's not a unrealistic budget, um.
Is that shared ours too? That's there at the trailer house?
That would be-
Yeah, that's part of the property. And he would sell it as is, is what he had talked about when he was there, I mean, if you guys wanna call and visit with him, um. I know he told Ray that he still has, he still had some of the stuff in the trailer that they'd have to get out, but, um, they would give that all out.
Is it just a corner lot, is it?
It's just, it's just a corner lot. Well, maybe, I don't know how that's split up there, it may actually be two lots, it's everything from the alley left.
How about I just go get, oh, go get the shit?
Yeah, it's every, yeah.
The width lies, or east and west is just a lot. You know how you got eastern, along the street, it's just, just a lot. That may be a big lot because it's on the corner too.
Yeah, it goes all the way to the alley, I'm sure.
Did this bill from the nursing home for the air conditioner repair, did that come across our desk? I don't remember seeing that.
Oh, that was a replacement, I think that, that coming out of Florida, I think.
Waddell's or Waddell's heating?
They, uh, they normally, the units that were in the assisted living part, those were the single room deals, and normally they come from Waddell's. They probably had one down, so. Or in the past they had, let me put it that way, I'm not saying they always do, in the past, that's, they did. If they had one down, they probably wouldn't have come in, they'd have had a replacement for somebody else.
Did we find out if we owned the washer and dryer at the nursing home?
I, I'm, I think she did, yeah.
Do you remember that she had that on that list of purchases that she had made?
I, I, I don't remember, I'm not saying-
That list disappeared, I know, but I asked for that list, and it's like after that meeting, it just disappeared, she had all kinds of stuff on there that she had purchased, and that was, you know, Kristen's justification for what we owed her in her mind, and the washer and dryer were on there, 'cause it was thousands, it was thousands. And it was like the, the lawnmower, um, and a lot of other things, and she had some furniture on there and sort of thing.
I just don't recall.
Well, I've asked Dawn for that list, and she said she's unable to track it down. So either, either we do own it, or when that list was presented to us, it was falsified that it was purchased by the business owner.
We always have, and, and, I, I'm not saying that in the past, I guess I should take.
I think that, that was the big conversation, it was, you know, we had them in there, and when they were replaced, you know, the accusation was that we didn't buy them to replace them, and that we should have, that's why they were part of that list of the expenses that she thought the county should have absorbed. But I can't say one way or another, because I, you know, I don't know that we, we bought them in the first place, or whether we did or didn't. I'm also wondering-
Sure that wasn't the one that was in the-
I'm not sure.
Assisted living, that machine that she might have said she bought, those big, uh, industrial ones, I know we bought them, we bought them ten years ago or so, we spent quite a little money buying them, 'cause they were down all the time, those big industrial ones, and that's what they were working on.
They have, the ones have to have, I don't wanna say a number, like hundred ninety three water through them.
Okay, so it's one lot and a partial lot, and she said the map is off a little bit, 'cause this should be the property line here, but this is the actual property line. There, so you can see that it takes up, 'cause that's the recycling center right there.
Yeah, goes all the way to the alley, right? These are probably, these are probably the easements. Big tall easements.
I know that Dawn had told Ray that half the driveway-
This, this here?
Um, right here, this driveway here that goes right by the recycling center.
I mean, is this the road through, it looks like that's the-
That's an alley.
That's an alley.
Yeah.
This is the street, not the-
Or is this the partial lot? What-
Uh, the partial lot is here, is on to the recycling center side.
I'm saying, the blue is highlighted.
Yeah, she said it's off a little bit, it should be down like this, and then there's the alley.
Yeah, but are there two parcels?
There's two lots, there's one lot, one full lot, and in the east, or in lot thirteen except the east thirty-five feet. So thirteen is here, so lot thirteen except the east thirty-five feet. So, I don't know how wide a lot is, but down there.
Oh, is that here then, thirty-five feet? If I'm backwards, that's the east end, right?
No, it would be this.
This is north, that'd be north.
Okay, I'm upside down, sorry.
'Cause the recycling center sits here, this lot is here, so it's probably one lot, and then part of lot thirteen. 'Cause it says it's, well, no, it says it's the east, except for the east half, so it'd be this part.
It says how big the lot is, hundred twenty feet, hundred thirty feet.
Yeah, but there are two parcel numbers? Yeah, this is the east, right?
Yeah, well, no, there's only one parcel number, 'cause it's all one parcel, so it's lot twelve and, and lot thirteen except for the east thirty-five feet.
The city lots, it has nothing to do with the county parcel, it's just a city lot difference.
Right, right, so this would be one lot, and this would be the other lot, sorry, I was thinking it was going into that direction.
But as long as it's one parcel number, then I'm purchasing one piece of property.
Yep.
This does say thirteen eighty.
Are there any taxes owed on it currently?
I don't think we, thirteen eighty, that's what they, I'd say it's a reasonable price.
You were in here, but I was asking, did we verify whether or not we own the washer and dryer at the nursing-
We own the washer and dryer. I believe, which I'll, I'll bring that down on Monday, I think that she is, she's leasing the dishwasher. And that's what I think that he was talking about, because I asked her if she'd send a list, but she updated the list and then sent me a modified list, and it says the lease of the dishwasher.
But we've still never found that original list of what she claimed she purchased.
She sent me the updated of that original list. So I don't know what she updated it with, but-
Okay. So when we pay Truitt McQueen, we're paying him under contractual out of the appraiser's budget, but what, I mean, is that a, we're doing that under accounts payable, because it's contractual, I understand that, it's not a payroll, but for, for what services, I mean, is that just a continual?
He's the reappraisal correct person.
I know, but I'm saying like, how, how do we know what section he's on, or what was appraised thus far this ye, reappraised thus far this year? You know, where he's at in that, I know he does it on a cycle.
Yeah, I, I can't, I don't-
We never get a report from him?
He has to do X amount per year.
I know, but I, I think we would, we should like to know where he is in that process. Especially with all the things you've seen that aren't kosher right now.
I don't think he does like one section. You know what I mean, I don't think he does like this township this year and this township next year.
So how is it on a rotation?
I think, I don't know, I said, I'm guessing it's, I didn't only ask to drive every mile already, and, and we don't have to pay it.
Another thing I, I have an issue with is to pay to pump the grease trap from the nursing home, I mean, I just-
That was for when they ran the G sewer line, was what that was for.
But have we been paying to get, to have that pumped?
I don't know.
I mean, I see we did it for the highway department from the same company.
But they, that's just the, uh, port of police.
The highway department, yeah, it's the Department of Reynolds.
Oh, that's the same company, okay.
They had to pump that thing out in order to run the G sewer line into it.
So, but I mean, have we paid for that in the past?
I assume we got, I don't know, but they've ever pumped it since we put it in.
I don't know.
Oh, was that because of the problem, that it wasn't, I mean-
Well, no, they pumped it, but, uh, they've done it when they, uh, whenever it backed up, which was caused by the line running back into the building instead of crossing the parking lot to the sewer main. So I would say if there was a time when there was an issue with it, we probably did.
We pay for everything that's associated with the grease trap.
Well, that was put in originally, that line ran out to it, and then it ran back into the building, to the sewer main inside the building, and that's why they back up occasionally. So that was the, to solve that problem, was running the new line across the parking lot to the sewer main, to the side there.
Right, but wouldn't there have been kind of sort of a routine maintenance with pumping that occasionally, I mean?
I guess it would depend on whether it was causing the problem with the backing up. It was kind of a, it was, I think, right at the beginning of, of sewer main, it should have gone back in the building, but.
What was the name of the company? I can't remember.
For what, the pump?
Yeah.
Ready-
Ready environmental.
This North Central Kansas CDL tuition, is that because we sent someone to get their CDL?
Yes.
Yeah, of course, through the, through the, uh-
Highway Department, or through the, yeah, North Central.
Look, yeah, location, technicals, do it.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but didn't we just go through the job descriptions, it said you have to have one? I mean, I, I didn't know that we hired someone without, is what I'm saying.
Uh, you can't hire a truck driver without, because they need to start, but our policy says that we give them six months to obtain a new lawyer system without, to obtain, so like, uh, if somebody was at-
Who did we hire that this, that this was paid for?
That one is Bobby Zachal, I believe, no, Bobby's doing his on his own, who was the last hire?
Jess. Jess, I couldn't remember. I don't-
Well, here, I have the bills, oh, look, uh, 'cause Bobby's doing his on his own, 'cause he had one before. Colton Anzor. That's who this one's on.
That is the, is that the most recent hire, I think? Maybe?
Yeah, I believe so, 'cause I think Fuller already had his. And then if they don't obtain their CDL, it's just not so good.
Oh, that's part of their prerequi, or their conditions and-
The driving part of your big deal's pre-trip inspection and all that stuff that they have to go through, that they basically, if they don't know, they gotta go take some kind of caution.
Yeah.
And the college up there offers the driving parts, we no longer have to take somebody out, which I don't know why they were doing that before, but, um, you don't have to take an employee in a vehicle out anymore, 'cause a lot of times we're having troubles getting our vehicles to pass inspection.
We have to get them.
And so-
Their behavior, so on and on.
They do all of that up there and actually issue the license if they're not paying, so.
What is the pay, uh, what are the payroll deductions from the treasurer to the treasurer?
Either motor vehicle tax or property tax.
Oh, from internally, okay, that's right, you've told me that before, just every time I see it, it confuses me.
There I am on till the fifteenth of March.
Every person on the repeater board has to pay an annual due? Huh?
No.
Not person, every entity that, that utilizes the repeater board. Or use re, utilizes the repeater pays an annual due, and the repeater sets, the repeater board sets what those dues are, and what everybody will pay, so like we bill the schools.
Basically pay for maintenance.
Utilities, updates, the equipment, although if they have to do a whole new repeater, there's not enough money.
But if you're saying, I mean, who, it doesn't say which department is paying, or where we're paying from.
It would, on the number out there, on the front number, it will.
I'd say it should say. Okay, ninety-two is First Rule Fire, all the ninety's are fire departments. Yeah, we've got that added, all these are fire departments, rescue squad. Um, okay, so that's First Rule Fire, Barnard, Beverly, Hunter, Sylvan, ambulance, health department, then we bill out the school and the hospitals, the two schools and the-
Is that forty and ten?
Forty is the health department, who's ten is, that's general fund, who's that? Ten eight is emergency management.
Okay. So then the, you bill from the repeater board to the schools separately, and they pay that?
The two schools, the hospital, I think that's everybody that uses.
They don't really, they used to use it some, both districts, but I haven't heard them use it for, it, it's just an emergency deal if theirs goes down.
The nurses aren't as much, I don't think, I think they, we bill out them a hundred dollars or something, a year.
They try to collect enough just to do the year's needs for it, so. I think the last time we put in a new one was what, ninety thousand? Eighty or ninety thousand, if I remember.
No, it was in two thousand and nine, because it was incredibly sick, and it was a presidential election year. I know you're doing those hospital bonds. Is that sad that I remember that?
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to request a report from Truitt McQueen if we're going to continue to pay out contractually, we have no idea where he is in his cycle of duties, I mean, does he have out, does he have set hours, set office hours here?
I, you can't, with a contract employee, you don't regulate, but I think he has so many hours that he's here, and I think he has specific days, because he does several counties.
Does he turn in, does he turn in any kind of, who, who does he-
An invoice.
He just turns in an invoice?
Monthly.
What does it say? Just contractual services? Yeah, I've never seen this, this is, this comes every month?
Yeah.
Just billing for reappraisal work completed, and then the invoice number, and then, so that's the monthly amount, two thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars, what's retainage?
They hold a retainage fee, and then at the end of the-
The appraiser holds it in his, in their-
Uh, the treasurer's office holds it.
In the end of the contract year, it's paid out? Please refer to appraisal billing progress form for a detailed description of the work completed, there we go, so where is this billing progress form? It says, please refer to appraisal billing progress form for a detailed description of the work completed for this period, as well as completed two date figures. If there are any questions regarding this bill, or please don't hesitate to ask, that's what we need. We don't have one?
It's in the appraiser does, but I don't know, I don't know whether she does or not.
Okay, I'll just, I'll, I'll go out and take this.
We're supposed to get some rain last night?
Yeah, not much, I don't, sounds, maybe Sunday, but I think that's getting kinda shaky too. Whether we'll have to put that burn badon back on on Monday or not, hate to do that. Doesn't look like there's anything out there, if we don't get something Sunday. Have to take a turnaround on that ambulance.
Okay, so it looks like he does not turn these in. Uh, the appraiser's office doesn't have any and she's not sure if she's ever received one. So, um, I, I move to request the appraisal billing progress form from Truitt McQueen.
Mark just had him come in and tell us what he's doing.
Well, he, he says he has these. This would be on every, he said this is printed on every. Invoice, so he should have them all. You know what, I'll just give you this and this will be the rest of my motion. Please refer, oh, excuse me, I move to request the appraisal billing progress forms. For a detailed description of the work completed as well as completed to date figures.
It's that whole, right, what he has there?
I have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all of the perverts say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I'd move with pay accounts payable for a hundred eighty-seven thousand. Two hundred, three hundred, or payroll, yeah. Payroll, a hundred eighty-seven thousand, thirty-two-five dollars and sixty cents.
Now the motion on the floor. Proceed with paying the payroll. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all of the perverts say aye.
I would move. To separate the payment to O'Hare Law LLC. Into its own motion. For approval.
I have a motion on the floor. To separate out the payment to the O'Hare Law firm for approval. Do I have a second? Motion died for lack of a second.
I move to exclude the payment to O'Hare Law LLC from the accounts payable. Until, exclude until. Attorney General opinion confirms that the commission. Is not. Participating. In an illegal arrangement.
I have a motion on the floor to exclude the payment. From the O'Hare, to the O'Hare Law firm. Do I have a second? Motion died for lack of a second.
I move to exclude the payment to Truitt McQueen for reappraisal services pending. The commission's receipt. Of his appraisal billing progress forms. Which are indicated on his invoices but have not been received, not ever been received, potentially.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Motion died for lack of a second.
I'd move with pay accounts payable for four hundred and. Seventy-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I have a motion on the floor to pay the accounts payable in the amount of four hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, um, what is this payment? From the first bank card? By the nursing home for curtains?
That was presented Monday. They were supposed to bring up a sample of the curtains, but the currents, curtains that we currently own, when they were taken down. Um, in the rooms that were repaired, she said they were literally falling apart and she was supposed to bring up. Some of the curtains to show you that they were deteriorated.
So how many curtains is this for one thousand thirty-nine dollars?
This is all the first bank card bills.
I mean, they, they hold one of our cards to just make purchases?
No, they called up and we wrote it for them. And they're fire retardant curtains. Here's. There was twenty for the north hall. Of one size and then twenty-four of another size for the south hall.
They're fire retardant.
They're fire retardant, yeah. I think the ones we had out there before, um, Norma Thompson had made. They were fancy, fancy.
They look nice.
The new ones? They're already there?
Yeah, cause they could. Cause they had to put people back in. They called on Wednesday and, um, they were putting people back in on Friday and they were taking the curtains and they fell apart. They were supposed to have brought up samples, so when I brought the invoice to you and talked to you guys about it, I could show you. They haven't and then I called back up again, cause I forgot that, um, Hannah hadn't brought those. So she stuck it in the box and they were supposed to bring them on Thursday whenever I did get them, so.
And who is K O N E Incorporated?
That's the elevator company and we just went ahead and paid for the maintenance agreement. I can't get Tyson to, or Thissen or Bison or however you pronounce it, our elevator company to give us a bid, so. We need to move on and.
So that's for running an entire year, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars?
Maintenance agreement.
I know they came out and looked at it, um. But I've never received anything and I can't get the guy to call me back, so. I don't know. I'll continue and maybe we can have something for November of this year.
I see a bill in legislature where they're gonna stop possibly charging for oil inspections. Did you see that?
No, I didn't see that one.
These payments in Lincoln County General Fund from the ambulance and the attorney's office for paper, does that mean they just get, got paper from what your stock is?
Got all the partners getting into.
Some do and some don't. I think they had all ordered some, they just haven't got it yet, cause some of them were done from Quill.
Wouldn't get so much better deal than bulk. If there's no further discussion, all of the perverts say aye.
Nate. Do you see it as a problem that our appraiser's office isn't retaining some sort of records on the progress of the contracted reappraiser?
I guess as long as the work's getting completed yearly like it's supposed to, I don't guess I need as much weight.
But I mean, how do we know that? If, you're saying if it's getting completed, but those reports are to show us what has been completed and we don't have any of them?
I don't know what you're gonna learn from that report. There are thousands and thousands and thousands of parcels out there that.
How, how many parcels is this county?
I have, there's, I wouldn't have any idea.
Do you know how many parcels?
I wouldn't even guess.
I think we have five thousand seven hundred.
Yeah. Why don't we know this? Like, isn't this something that should be important to the commission to know how many parcels we have approximately? Or like just an idea or to know how many is supposed to get done? I mean, I'm seeing that there's been no oversight on the appraiser's office, because look at all the issues we've seen this year already, two months into the year.
Well, I guess. What some people consider to be issues aren't what other people consider to be issues.
There are definitely issues if we're misap- misappraising and we are. We just signed thousands of dollars worth of abatements because of.
We sign abatements every year.
Not, not to the tune of the amount that we've seen already in the first two months of the year.
I don't know if I would say that either.
And not for the same reasons. There's a difference between someone selling a vehicle.
The first few months of the year are normally when the, most of them show up, I think.
There's a difference between someone selling a vehicle and us having to reimburse them for what they've paid for that year. Or coming in because their, the size of their building or some other issue has come up with the appraisal that was done by the appraiser.
I don't know. I've made a couple of mistakes measuring things in my life. And I used to measure things every day and I've still.
But how are you keeping track of the percentage of mistakes that are being made if we have no reports from the appraiser's office? Guys, I just feel like you don't care and I'm tired of that feeling. It is the commission's job to care about those things.
I've never seen a problem with it before.
You've never seen a problem with the appraiser that we contract not turning in any record of his work? To the best of Rhonda's knowledge, she doesn't know that she has any reports from him. That means our appraiser that we have contracted isn't keeping track of the additional appraiser that's contracted through that office. I mean, who is the oversight for the appraiser's office? Who, who's the supervisory personnel to the appraiser's office?
The work has to be done in order for us to levy taxes, so the work evidently is being done. They're graded by the state. We get a report every year about, I think every year about, on how well they have done the appraisal for the county, so. I mean, the State Department of Revenue is overseeing the appraiser's office.
So you don't think that even though you contract the appraiser, that you have direct responsibility for that, the activities in that office?
If I get a bad report from the state, I'm certainly going to, to visit with the appraiser, but as long as the. Reports are good from the state, I assume that the state knows that he's doing a good job and the work is being completed.
But you're gonna rely on someone who's not even here and has no interaction with that office to tell you the performance of the office that's right down the hall?
I think the state, people have a lot more understanding of what is supposed to be going on down there than you and I do.
I think we would have a lot more understanding if we were getting reports and there was some sort of communication instead of just writing the paychecks, you know, without any supervision. I feel like you don't understand.
People turn in time cards every month that I don't go out and monitor whether they're here every minute. They turn in a time card or not.
I understand that. And that is a problem, a universal problem. It's not, you know, unique.
Sixty employees. Do you wanna check and make sure they show up for work on time every day and they don't clock out?
There's a difference.
At night.
There's a difference between not receiving any kind of validation of work and then. We have other department heads or elected officials that are responsible.
State yearly comes in and reviews their stuff.
My concern is that the state is not directly involved and we are right here constantly and have no clue as to what's going on. I'm sorry, but neither of you even knew close to how many parcels we've had in this county. That, to me, that's a little bit of a deficiency that we need to address.
You think everything that I've ever done is a deficiency?
No, I think.
Yeah, you do.
No, I think that your attitude.
You criticize everything that has ever been done here.
Terry, your attitude of not caring and not wanting to have any oversight, that's the criticism. Not that mistakes are made.
By knowing exactly how many parcels there is, because it probably changed since you just told you.
What I, what I do know, what I've gained in knowledge by knowing how many parcels there are, is relative to other counties and how many parcels they are, how many people they hire and how many people it takes to run their departments. There are counties out there that share appraisers, much larger counties than we do, and they share the oversight.
They may share the actual appraisal, but they don't staff, share all the staff in that office.
And then they don't contract out to a second party like we are. So you have to weigh those things out. You have to actually care to look at the numbers in the decimal place. You have to care. But if you're not going to care, then it's just going to continue as it is without any knowledge and just saying, you know, however they do it is fine. And we don't really know, cause what I've been told repeatedly is that you don't know.
I don't. How many, exactly how many parcels there are on the county is not something I feel like I need to know.
But you're also saying that you don't need to know where our contracted appraiser is in his progress for the year. Or apparently for years and years and years past.
Reappraisal.
Contracted reappraisal, excuse me. I don't really think we have that type of report from our appraiser either, but you know, that's another issue for another day.
Are we gonna buy that parcel land?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to do, offer that three, thirteen eighty? I think that's a fair price.
Does somebody wanna move?
Is that the exact number?
One thousand three hundred and eighty is what it's appraised at. He had told me, I wrote down that, he said lots is valued at thirteen hundred and that's what he was, that they were going to, um, ask for what it was valued at. So I was saying, he gave me like an estimation.
Okay.
But you guys told me what you wanna offer.
I'm gonna authorize. The clerk. To present an offer. At a thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. To.
Uh, it's, it's Dawn and Wilma is what they go by.
Okay, I just saw it being there. I don't know. See that? I don't know what that means. But it says N Pans V, I don't know.
Oh, uh, Velma is for, is it Velma? Wilma, they call her Wilma. It's Dawn and Wilma Pans.
Just put that then, I guess, if that works. For parcel number, do you need parcel number?
You can just say for the lots, um, South and Recycling, or I can put the lot. You can just say for the lots, um, south of the recycling center, or I can put the lot description.
For the lots?
So it'd be lot thirteen for a lot. It's a thirteen.
Twelve.
Twelve and, and part of lot thirteen. How did you find it?
Down there, yeah. Did you put adjacent to the recycling center or something?
I can, yeah.
Have a motion on the floor to purchase real estate from the Panthers, do I have a second? I will second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I will call in and find out and then if there are re-able, we'll start the process.
I'm here to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Being adjourned till ten AM Monday, Monday?
No. Vote.